City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded May 20, 2024.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular meeting of the Common Council to order. Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Here.
Guthrie.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Broderick.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Steinmetz.
Here.
Niebohn.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Boosie.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And everyone is present, if you would please join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I suppose that pledge of allegiance means a little bit more today, because we are recognizing Memorial Day on Monday, June 14th is Flag Day, so there are a lot of things going on related to the flag. And as part of that, I'm going to take some of my opening remarks to read a proclamation. I think I'll hold off on that. I think what we'll do is we'll let members of the public wish to address the council first, and then right before item number five, I'll read that proclamation. We are honored today to have our American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Princess Caitlin McDowell with us, and she's going to be giving us some words that she wrote to honor and recognize Memorial Day. So we will move on to item number four. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. I only had one person sign up for that, and that is Brooke Brown. Brooke?
So my name is Brooke Brown. I work with Express Employment Professionals here in Stevens Point, and I wanted to talk to you about the initiative that I'm presenting, and it is to wipe out the current student debt that the Stevens Point Public School District has. Right now, there is $25,000 in student debt, student lunch debt, excuse me, student lunch debt. And I am working with my clients, the businesses that I work with, as well as the public, to try to raise money to help pay that debt off. The families that don't qualify for free lunches, the lower-income families that are just above that line, they struggle to meet that requirement and pay for their kids' lunches, and so they go farther and farther into debt, and it rolls over, and it rolls over. And so they're my workers. They work for me. They work for the community. They work in a lot of my clients' businesses, and so I think that this is a really good way to pay it back and say thank you to our workers that are struggling to feed their kids at lunch during school. So you can look on my website for my company, Express Employment Professionals Stevens Point. All of my posts are there with the links to donate. I'm working directly with the school district, so it's a link directly to their donation page, Money for Meals, and I have some benefits as well. So if you're an individual donating, you can get your name put into a drawing for a Blackstone Grill, as well as if you're a client, a business, that would like to donate, there's benefits there as well with working with us. So if you would be able to go to the website, it would help out the community, and it's a great way to give back, so.
Thank you very much, Brooke.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight as well. Of course, there's lots of families out there that have challenges, even paying for school meals at a reduced rate, so if anybody can help, that would be wonderful. All right, that speaker list is exhausted. For item number four, we will move on to item number five, which is a presentation to the mayor and council from the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Princess Caitlin McDowell. But before we do that, Caitlin, I want you to join me at the lectern. So whereas the American Legion auxiliary poppy was first offered to the public in Wisconsin in May 1920, do you remember that? Our old parks director did, Tom Schrader. He was there. Kidding. Whereas the distribution of poppies before Memorial Day is a method of honoring those who gave their lives in the service to their country, and whereas the poppy is made by hand by disabled veterans, thereby providing them with therapy and a source of income, and whereas all proceeds from the poppy distribution are used exclusively in programs for needy veterans and their families, and for rehabilitation of disabled veterans, now therefore I might wish a mayor of the city of Stevens Point to hereby declare Monday, May 27, 2024, as American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Day in the city of Stevens Point, and do urge its citizens to participate in honoring its war dead while aiding the living veterans by wearing the red flower of Flanders Fields on this day. Caitlin, that's for you, and the lectern is yours.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McDowell. I'm here because I am your poppy princess, and a citizen of your community trying to make this country a better place. Alongside me is my family and the American Legion Auxiliary. The American Legion Auxiliary is an amazing organization that supports veterans and their families. They work alongside the American Legion to provide various programs and services, including scholarships, volunteer opportunities, and advocacy for veterans' rights. I wanted to talk to you about the beautiful and symbolic flower known as poppy. Poppies are not just ordinary flowers. They carry deep meaning and significance in various cultures around the world. First and foremost, poppies are often associated with remembrance and honoring those who have sacrificed their lives in war. The red poppy in particular has become a symbol of remembrance for fallen soldiers, inspired by the famous poem In Flanders Field. These vibrant red flowers serve as a reminder of the sacrifices made by brave men and women. The American Legion Auxiliary poppy program dates back to 1921. On September 27, 1920, the poppy became the official flower of the American Legion family to commemorate the soldiers who fought and died during war. Each year since then, it has been a tradition of American Legion members to hand out poppies around the time of Memorial Day. Wearing a poppy is to show support and sacrifice for our veterans. It represents all those veterans that are no longer with us, but we still keep in our memories. The poppy has been a symbol of remembrance for over 100 years. There is no correct way to wear it, no matter how you display it. It shows honor to those of our veterans. The poppy, oh, sorry. The poppy is red because that is the natural color of the poppy, but it also symbolizes the blood of those that sacrificed so much for us. The donations that are collected from the poppies that are made by veterans are used only for veterans, active military, and their families. I want to express my gratitude for all the sacrifices made by service men and women, and encourage others to honor their memory. Remember that freedom is not free, and that it is our duty to pressure, to preserve, and protect it.
Thank you, Caitlin. And now Caitlin will sing our net. Oh, we're not going to do that? I'm kidding. All right. Well, thank you very much. Item number six is our consent agenda. We did have one person who signed up for that. Jackie Shimke?
Hi, Jackie Shimke, 440 West Trillium Court, Stevens Point. I'm just here because I know it's going to be discussed the minutes are regarding West River Drive. I'd just like to let you know that as a neighborhood, we are going to be coming together to come up with some solutions that we think would work in our neighborhood, so I'm hoping that you'll keep an open mind and not come to some decisions hastily. I know it was mentioned that you don't want to have any knee-jerk reactions. I think it was at the planning commission meeting last week. This is something that's been ongoing as an issue in our neighborhood, so we don't see solutions as knee-jerk reactions. These are things that we need to be, should have been done a long time ago, so we're hoping that you'll definitely take into consideration what we're going to have to say and present to you, and that we can work together with you. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And Jackie, I'll extend the invitation to have someone from the city, our director of public works, or someone from the Streets Department available, if you want someone to attend your meetings. That would be wonderful. Thank you. All right, before you is the consent agenda. Is there any other person wishing to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have item number two under J, the license list, pulled from consent.
J to the license list.
Yes, please.
Okay. Anybody else want to pull anything else for further discussion? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with J2 being pulled for further discussion.
Move to approve the agenda minus item J2, please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Shuda. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. With item J2, that is the Minutes and Actions of the Public Policy General Government Meeting of May 13, that is the license list. President Christensen, the floor is yours.
Okay, I would request that item number 17, under the Class B beer and license, be postponed until next month's meeting.
Item number 17 is what?
Number 17 is for the icon.
Icon. Okay. So is your motion to approve the list with item 17 postponed?
I would move approval of the remainders and ask that with the exception of number 17, and that would be postponed to the June meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, Burr? Seconded by Burr. Discussion. Comments from the audience? To restate the motion, the motion is to approve the license list as presented, with the exception of number 17, the icon, which is downtown on Main Street. That will be postponed until the June round of meetings. Is that correct, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. We will be discussing the icon license at next month's round of meetings. Item number seven is a resolution, a request from Bailey Voight, representing St. Peter's Parish, for assigned variance to install a freestanding sign exceeding the minimum maximum height requirements on the property located at 800 Fourth Avenue with the parcel ID'd in your packet, consistent with Chapter 25.14.
I will move approval.
Moved by Keimer?
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebohn. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, please call the roll, clerk.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is a resolution, a request from the city of Stevens Point for a preliminary subdivision plat review of the planned subdivision on the property located at 5498 Guller Road with the parcel identified in your packet, consistent with Chapter 20.05 Sub 1. We do have several people that have registered either for or against, and those will be into the record. We do have several people also that signed up to speak. Diane Summers, you wish to speak?
I was going to have everyone else speak first, but they didn't mention the things I was interested in, then I wanted to speak.
Okay. Yeah, we normally just kind of go by the way they're put in. That would give special preference to people speaking last or first.
I did send an email to all of the people on the Common Council, and I was going to read that today, but my printer wouldn't work. But essentially, what it said is, "I do appreciate that you have done some things to improve your original plan. That is commendable, but it's still not what we like." And the three things that I think that I'm focusing on a lot is, number one, is the Maple Bluff connection. That road is very narrow. It's a road that people walk on and rock their dogs and bike on. There's always somebody on that road. There are blind spots on that road, and now the green circle is going to bring their green circle across the river, the Plova River, and then it's going to come up, actually, Maple Bluff. So you're going to have cars coming out of that subdivision, down that road. You can't see traffic. It's narrow, and you know what? They can just zoom right down to target. And I think it's extremely unsafe. I think, I don't know if you had any kind of a safety analysis on that or not, because it's an accident waiting to happen. The second item that I'm concerned about is the density. It's 60 lots yet, but they're huge, and the small ones are smaller than if you would put a trailer on. They are 60 by 60, or one-tenth of an acre, and I don't see how someone can actually build a big house on this small lot, or what is left? Nothing. And where are they going to park their car? On the road? Because their garage is probably going to be filled with things that they can't store in their house. So I think there's a better place to put homes that are smaller like that. There are places in the city. I know that you have lots of land around here, and at that point, why don't you suggest those homes go in there? And it's a beautiful, beautiful place. It's a park, and you want nice homes in there. And across the road, there's beautiful homes all around, and they're not that expensive, but there's just land, a little bit more land, and we want to keep that. And I think that's in your subdivision ordinance, in part that there should be a park in the subdivision, and you should also take into consideration all the kind of communities that are in that area. Now, I don't think that Mr. Ryan would like to put some of those small houses or lots across from his beautiful home in Park Ridge. I don't think he would like that, and we don't either. We feel for some people that can't afford a big house, but it should be in a proper place. I was just in Oak Park this weekend, and beautiful homes, well-kept yards. This is what you want for Stevens Point. You want it to be a great place. You don't, you just want it, and there should be more thought put into it. And so the third thing that, of course, my husband will speak to later about is the land that's kept free below the creek. That space is 15 feet, and if you're going to put a walkway there, you're going to have to cut down trees, and we don't want to do that. So those are the three big issues that I'm really concerned about, plus others. And when we go around to talk to people about this, they said, "What can I do about it? The city's going to do it anyway, right?" And that's not a democracy. And at West River Drive, they want you to come and talk to them about this because it's in their neighborhood, and we never really talked about this. You just were going to plump it down in this neighborhood without even speaking to any of us who live there. So I think you should have taken that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Point of clarification, Director Knowski lives in the city of Stevens Point. Dale Bowe? Did I get that right?
Bovee.
Bovee.
Hi, I live at 240 Ridgewood Drive, which is just across the road from this subdivision you guys are planning on putting in. I guess my concern is, what are your intentions with these very small lots? I mean, what kind of people are you going to be expecting to move into those kind of lots? It's going to be very small houses, and I just don't think that jamming them all in in that given area is the right place for it. And I just have a bad feeling that the city of Stevens Point is not also pushing in some of them, possibly the homeless into our area, but also the fact that you're going to be bringing water and sewer in up to that area, which leads to our concerns that you're going to be forcing us into that quagmire down the road at some point. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Clarification on that one? The city cannot force annexation. Item, let's see. Up next is Amy Anderson.
Hello, good evening. This is my third or fourth meeting now on this, and I felt it important to reflect on the things that the council and some folks that I don't see here this evening have offered up during the past meetings concerning the new subdivision. I felt it only fair to reflect, since I'm asking each of you to truly take the time to reflect, and I do appreciate that you have listened so far and you have made some changes. Each item that I'm going to speak to has been spurred on by the direct conversation or quotes by either one of the council members or the mayor himself. Number one, it was said in the last meeting, "Let's not throw away 'good' in an attempt for the 'perfect.'" And I say, "How about not 'good' or 'perfect,' but 'great'?" I think we are on the way to "good," and it could be great if we were to slow down and wait for that to happen. As the mayor said, this is not a project that's about money. It is not housing for profit. So if the city is not mostly concerned about profit, then let's take the time to get it great, to please get it right for our neighborhood. Two, as the mayor stated two meetings ago, he loves his home. He loves the size. He loves his exact neighborhood, and he wouldn't, and I quote, "want it" any other way. And what I have to say to that is exactly, exactly. We love our neighborhood, just as it is. We are willing to grow, all of us, and we welcome new neighbors, but we want it to feel like our type of neighborhood. I saw a sign while driving last weekend, and it read, "Drive like your children live here." And I thought, "Yeah, I'm asking you to develop and build like you live here, where we live, in our neighborhood." Mrs. Niebohn also had a similar statement, that she loves her neighborhood. I don't blame her. But I'd like to point out that her neighborhood, and the size of it that she kept stating, would be very similar to what's being put in by us, is not the same. There's about one and a half homes per lot more. The density is much higher and cannot have that same lovely feel that her neighborhood has. The third thing that has been brought up often is this connectivity, connectivity, connectivity. It sounds great. It's definitely been a buzzword. Why not connect us with a walking path? Leave out a few homes, give into some green space. Losing just a few spaces to put a home would eliminate the need for a road from Everland Court, and I think it would take all of us a great way to bridging the gap. Connectivity sounds great, like it'd be a real game changer. Connectivity. We are already connected by Duncan and Gala. Connectivity is a good idea to me, like when Fat-Free Butter came out. It sounds amazing until you try to use it. It's not great, and we're hoping for great. I realize that the city has obtained this land and is very powerful and can do whatever they want, however they want, but as a very wise man once told me, and it's stuck, "Just because you can doesn't mean you should." I ask you to take more time, to continue to take more input, and bridge this gap from "good" to "great." I believe that this group in front of me has the mind power, the resources, and I'm hoping the compassion to do it and do it just a little bit better than what we have so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Summers.
Nick Summers, 292 Maple Bluff, Stevens Point. Maybe many of you don't realize that there is a drainage ditch that goes through this property, and it was formed in 1940. And it has the Town Hall, Town of Stockton, and five farmers in a drainage district. And the easement reads, "To construct a drainage ditch, enlarge a drainage ditch, repair a drainage ditch, rebuild a drainage ditch, and maintain it perpetually and maintain ditch forever." This is something that is really, really important. It drains thousands of farmland acres to the east. I farm in that area, and there's some farmers here, and this is for generations. And if this thing is not kept up and not keep flowing for, this is for 100 years. This is generations. This isn't today or tomorrow. This is forever. And this drainage covers a whole area. It's large. Also, this drainage ditch easement, I'll read it from our lawyer who wrote, and I don't know if you all got it, and it reads from our attorney, "My clients' easements permit them to access the creek for maintenance purposes throughout the entire platted area. Easements are recorded, run with the land, and will be binding against purchasers of all lots." That means if something goes wrong, I can drive around your front yard or your backyard and fix it. We had some gains on a couple meetings, and we have an outlot on the other side of the road, across from Belowsky Road, and we asked for outlot on the other side, on the city side. And it's not what we had planned, and not what our attorneys had with Ryan Knowski. He took the outlot on the creek instead of on the bank, and we had a 65-foot easement that we were going to maintain. It was going to be green space, and everybody was excited about it, natural area, so we could go in and clean it without going through the neighbors' yards and sneak around trees, so we don't have to cut any trees along the bank, cause erosion, and change. It's beautiful out there. There's no grass growing. There's shade. It's a Class II trout stream. It's a drainage ditch, and it's flowing year-round. Now, why won't we keep it? Make it wonderful? No, we're going to go cut trees. Now, the new plan for the city is, they gave us 15 feet along the bank. So now we have to go cut every tree along the bank if we want to make any kind of progress to clean it. And what is the city? The pinerie city that keeps trees and plants trees? Doesn't Stevens Point get awards for trees? It's one of the, I think it's one of the, in Wisconsin, probably the best city for trees. There is. Here, we're going to go cut them out all along the creek, make erosion. You don't care. Trees, it takes 80 years to grow these trees. Why don't people sit back and walk this area, see what it is? It's for a couple more lots. Got to squeeze in more lots because we need them. The mayor said you don't have to make any money on this project, but we got to squeeze some more lots in. So there goes your green space. There goes our 65 feet. Well, I'm saying 15 feet doesn't cut it. We're going to go through people's lots. You can see we have the law behind us. It's recorded. It's been recorded two years ago. Nobody contested it. It's still on the books. Why not keep things natural? I mean, don't people want things natural now, the environment? Those trees out there are sucking at carbon for the environment. Going to go mow them all off, put blacktop, concrete, put all roofs on. There won't be a green tree there. It's gone. A forest near Stevens Point. And the last thing is, and it's gone for generations, the last thing is, the mayor says, "Well, why don't you buy it back?" At a meeting. You said that. Well, we had a meeting after this last meeting, and we have a proposal, and I think it's a pretty good proposal that you should. We have some numbers that, it's way more than the city paid for it. It'll pay for mostly most of the surveying, and can you imagine getting 100 people to the last two meetings, over 100 people, okay? And we can get probably enough money to pay to save it. That's how important this is to people. And this figure is between $600,000, $650,000. Can you imagine people would pay that just to save this area? They're concerned. How many people would do that? How many areas? I ask you to save it and think about the easements, because these easements are going to be published. We're going to go to all the realtors, and we're going to tell them there's easements on this property. If you're buying and selling this property, there is an easement that people can cross your land.
Thank you. Jim DeWeird?
I'm Jim DeWeird, 5364 Duncan Drive, Stevens Point. Thanks for your time and efforts in this, and those are two hard acts to follow. I wish Caitlin were here. I would say thank you. I'm a veteran. I bought my poppy. I hope all of you do too. There are a couple things about this project that... There are a couple of things about this project that I don't like, and number one is the density of the homes. And if you look around us, east of Berlowski, west of Duncan Drive area and Maple Bluff, and we have a fairly nice even density of homes, and this really increases the density a lot in this little plot. And I know, I've seen the numbers, I've seen the numbers that Jim Anderson put together, and even with his project, he couldn't make it go at 33 homes, and the only way we can make it go is to add a lot more homes, and I think it's just way too dense. Pay attention to the number of people that have spoken against this issue. This room, the other room has been full, I don't know tonight, but there's been a lot of discord and a lot of unhappiness in the entire neighborhood in all directions from this proposed project. We don't like the density, we don't like the potential for traffic, we don't like the road that comes out onto Maple Bluff because it comes on a tight corner, and it's a safety issue as far as we are all concerned. So those are my points, and I've said them four times now in four different meetings, and maybe you get tired of hearing them. You guys haven't, but the plant commission has. So I would appreciate the opportunity to suggest that this project be held until we can either create something, buy it back, or do something that really fits the blend of the neighborhood. And I think that's important, is how this fits into the blend of the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jan Way.
Dave Wills is not able to be here tonight. He's the chair of the Town of Hall and was unable to attend due to a prior engagement. So I am Jan Way, and I am one of the township supervisors, and I just wanted to highlight some of the main issues that Dave had referred to in some, in a prior communication that he had included in your packet as well. One main issue is the unresolved drainage easement issue that's been brought up, which is of high concern. We are aware that those main principles of the drainage district and the city are still in discussion. Another main issue to the town and most of the neighboring citizens is the density of the parcels. That's also been brought up. We would like you to consider reducing that number to 43 as suggested in a proposal by Jim Anderson of the Anderson Development Company. That proposal was shared with Mr. Kornowski on April 10, 2024. I would like to focus some attention on the last issue that Dave mentioned in his letter to you. The Town of Hall is not comfortable with the proposed connection being considered to connect Evelyn Court to Maple Bluff Road, especially when Duncan Drive and Sandy Lane already are connectors to that quiet Maple Bluff neighborhood. If your concerns are EMS-related, we suggest that those needs could be accommodated by a fire lane or a gravelled road. Please at least consider a postponement of this additional connection at this time. Allow this proposal to be thoroughly studied by the community at large and for discussion between the two municipalities to occur before proceeding with this connection. In summary, please ask the City Community Development Office to reduce the density levels of the planned subdivision and to eliminate or at least postpone the Evelyn Court connection. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, our speaker list is exhausted. Members of the county council, thoughts, questions, comments, or a motion?
I have a, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
There's an offer to buy back.
There is not.
There's not an offer to buy it back?
There is not.
Okay. Did I hear a, there's a...
Proposal?
Proposal to like buy lots, though? Like, it's like they want the easement, like the north plat, like along the river?
There has been no official proposal to the city at all. Director?
That's correct. So there was an informal discussion between myself and Mr. Anderson where he had asked if that was an interest of the city, and I had simply stated, "Well, never say, never throw an offer out, but it'd have to be a pretty substantial offer." You know, if, if we were to ever go down that route, you know, we would still want our utilities put in, and that's got to be something we take into account as it relates to what we would sell the parcel for. Because if you look at the city's outward growth projections or where we would go outside of our current footprint, it would be to the northeast of this specific property, and so having the ability to put utilities in, it makes the most sense. And I just don't think that the folks that are interested in buying it would be willing to buy it for what the city would be willing to sell it for. But it was an informal conversation. There's been no formal proposal. There's been nothing written in stone. In fact, there's been nothing written as it relates to the offer.
Any other comments? Questions?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution as written and as provided in the agenda packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by President Christensen. Discussion there. Yes.
I want to take a moment to acknowledge the grief and fear of change that I've heard so many people express through this process. Stevens Point needs housing. Infill is not enough to get us what we need. The voices that are not represented in this room are all of the families who have been putting bids on houses for years and still living in apartments even though they don't want to be. This space is within biking and walking distance of key amenities, schools, and grocery stores. I think that staff have done an excellent job. The Maple Bluff intersection, as I walked it the other day, appears safe to me, and that's what we understand from the folks who have degrees in this planning. The minor concerns raised in the environmental impact report are being mitigated. The green space that so many people feel like they are losing, which I appreciate, is in your backyards. We just set aside 30 acres just east of here in honor of Kent Hall, who I understand has passed recently. I want to thank the staff for honoring what we need in this community, which is more housing and denser housing while maintaining access to beauty like a creek and access to schools and other key amenities. Thank you to the staff. I'm so sorry for those who do not want this in their backyard. I'll be honest, if I live next to a beautiful woods with a creek running through it, I don't want, I don't imagine that I would want new development to go in there either. But if we all take that stance and new housing is never developed in anyone's backyard, we don't get what this community needs. Thank you for sharing your feedback. I've considered it. I walked the space the other day with Mr. Schaffenbühl, who's a birder in that area, and heard about his 30 years of watching birds in that space. It's beautiful, and I feel like it's our responsibility to speak for the people who are looking to live in our community, for our employers who want to maintain folks in our community with my vote tonight, which will be in favor of this plot.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
We have been asked tonight to have some compassion, and I guess I would just ask the same from members of the public tonight. It seems to me like there are some moral judgments being made about hypothetical future neighbors who might be living in a smaller home and have a smaller yard than you do. And I appreciate that change is different and scary, and the character of your neighborhood might be changing. I personally live in, live on a very small lot now. That was a change for me when I moved to the city. I think I have a lovely home. I have a small yard, but I park my car in my garage. I don't leave all of my things out and about. I think that if you give this subdivision a chance, you might be surprised at the connections that you might be making with your future neighbors, and I have a lot of trust that staff will continue to hear feedback and incorporate improvements into their plan as time goes on. So I will be happy to support this plot tonight.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I was voted in a couple of years ago to represent the people, and I felt I wasn't getting represented. That's why I'm sitting here now and volunteered basically to do this. And change is difficult. There's no doubt about it, and especially if it changes someplace that we live. And we have a lot of people here that are asking for more answers, and I think as a government body, we owe it to the people to give them all the answers, not all the answers that they might like, but to work even farther ahead so that these people get all the answers and they can go forward. The housing, I don't know how much of the housing this is going to really help. These are going to be $400,000 homes. They're not $200,000 homes. And we have a lot of land in other places that we don't have to rush this project and all these people. Now, granted, most of these people are the Town of Hall, but I also, I represent Pine Bluff, and everybody from Pine Bluff that I've talked to, which is only one block over, are against this project as it currently, currently we are at. And so I would like to see us delay, there's no rush on this thing. There's no houses that are going to be built before 2026 anyway if we start selling the lots tomorrow. So I would like to see us have more of a community favor of answering more fully the questions that these people are asking and work with them and see if we can't even better the solution that we have currently.
Thank you. Alda Keimer.
Thank you. I have been thinking about this for a long time. This project has been underway in one shape or form for my entire three years on council, beginning even prior to that. And I understand why people are angry and frustrated. Your neighborhood is changing, and you want it to stay the same. And for many people, their home is the most valuable asset that they own, so it's natural that you would want to protect that. And I think even though you've not been able to stop this project completely, I think you have substantially changed it for the better. When I look at all the iterations of it over the years, you know, many people have come to Plan Commission here today saying, you know, it's too many parcels. We have public partners and private partners who are saying 60 is not enough. One of the things that was really important to me was preserving the access to Forest Creek for not only the existing community that's using it now, but providing new public access to future users and residents. And I know there's some debate in terms of what that 65 feet that's listed in our plat represents. Maybe it's not the same 65 feet that you wanted, but I'm really happy to see the creation of a pedestrian corridor here for people to walk and bike, where currently walking seems to be fairly difficult and risky. One of the things people mentioned over and over was how much they love to walk along the roadways here, but the existing roadways in your neighborhood are not designed for people, they're designed for cars. I also heard a lot of residents discussing other safety concerns, how dark this area is at night, how little space there is on the road shoulder, the lack of public green space. And I think these are all things that the city can help improve with new street lighting, with sidewalks, with trails, things that take into account people and not just cars. Another consideration, eventually the well and septic systems here will fail, and many of you will choose to build those again, but I think having the option to join city water and sewer might be a more cost-effective solution for many people. And I think the future home buyers that might be looking to buy your homes someday may appreciate that option. I do have questions and concerns about the Evelyn Court connection and how that's designed, and I think it's really important to make that connection in a way that increases visibility and safety. That Safe Street, the Safe Streets for All grant, which is part of this packet, I think is a great opportunity for the city and the county, who are partners in that project, to envision how a variety of transportation users, cars, bikes, people on foot, can all safely utilize that corridor. Because you're right, the green circle's coming through there, there needs to be some big picture planning on how all of those different users can use that space. So in closing, I want to thank city staff and the department heads for working together and responding creatively and collectively, and I will be supporting this plan.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No comment. I agree with like what Alda Shuda was saying, that these are not low-income housing. This is not affordable housing. These are lots that folks are going to put $400,000 homes on. I mean, this isn't a place for us to put homeless, low-income in Section 8. I mean, these are going to be spec home, I mean, these are not going to be, these are going to be custom homes for everybody who could afford it. So it's not going to be a low-income housing. The concerns that I do have is that the number of zero lot, zero lot line lots, that's the only concern that I have. The rest of the lots, I think, have more than enough space, really. But, but I think that overall, they have, they have increased, they have increased the size of these lots. We've been on this for years, as Alda Keeler was saying, but we've talked, we've talked, we've talked about this, we've bought this land, and so on. And again, I'm with Alda Shuda, if there is something else that we could do, we should actually look at this, because this is going to be one of the, I think this is going to be one of the premier neighborhoods in our city, because there is nowhere else that you could buy a lot and build a home. You have to go to Hall, you have to go to, if you want city water, you have to go to Plover for that. There's nowhere in the city that you could buy a plot of land, buy a lot, and buy a, and end up putting up your own house that you want. And that is a good mix of things that we need here in our cities, that people aren't going to Plover and Whiting and so on.
Thank you. Alda Niebohn.
I respectfully disagree with Alda Maro and Alda Shuda. I don't think all of these homes are going to be $400,000 homes. Some of them might be $250,000 homes, which might be affordable for some folks. A lot of people want to downsize when they get to be around my age, and smaller lots and smaller homes become very attractive, particularly if there aren't any stairs. So there will always be a market for folks, and that opens up larger homes for families, and it helps the housing market turn around and provide options all over the area for folks. I think the mix of lot sizes will bring in some creative housing styles, and I think that's a good thing. The extension of city utilities, who knows how important that will be in the future? It may be extremely important and prohibitively expensive in the future. So doing something like this now hedges a lot of bets. So all in all, I think the staff's done a really good job, and generally speaking, I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alda Christensen.
I guess I'd like to echo some of the other sentiments that were shared as far as thanking staff for utilizing some of the input that has been shared over the last few weeks and months as far as being able to take that input and actually, I think, come up with a better plan than what we started with. I actually thought it was a very creative solution to put a lot of the smaller lots in the interior of the project, so the lots that are on the exterior and adjacent to the existing housing would be more similar to what's there. And that was as a result of some of the concerns that were expressed at earlier meetings. I do think that the plan as presented actually has a lot of very, very good qualities, and I do think it's going to provide some, some housing for people that are going to want to enjoy all the amenities that are there. I like the fact that we did, as was mentioned, add a walking path, and it's going to be something that's going to be a plus, not just for the new residents out there, but for those of us that live in other parts of the city. So I will be supporting this concept.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alda Lee.
I too would like to echo the thanks to the staff. I've had questions on this. This is something that you're here to learn, get the background on, and the staff has been great when it's come to answering questions. I've had my concerns with the easement and the water quality, the lot size, and let's say, Mr. Kornowski's given me a lot of his time, and thank you for that, because coming to understand how this makes sense for the city is something that I wanted to understand, because I did not initially understand why this place, why the timing, how does this make sense for us financially? How are we going to... How are we going to make this a part of the broader vision for our east side development? I've spent a good deal of time trying to research this and I still have some concerns. I will be supporting this though because this is a preliminary plat. There is still that opportunity for us to look at things like, oh, maybe these lots shift around, maybe, but the things that aren't going to change, that we do need to move forward on are things like the roads, the streets, that sort of thing isn't going to change. So seeing as we still have a lot of room for discussion about what it eventually becomes when it comes to a plat level, the lots, how many are there, that's still not exactly set in stone. I, I can see that if we're going to get anywhere on that, we need to move forward discussions of, what I heard from you guys, maybe that whole north thing, you guys want to donate to the parks in Stevens Point and there's your park. But that's what it took to get parks here is people donating land because they wanted to see something preserved in their neighborhood. That's how that stuff works. I don't want to see a forest cut down, just like, it rubs me the wrong way, but how do you preserve that? The people got to step up and say, that's the thing that we want to keep. And if these lot sizes can, you know, maybe change around, we can find a little bit better way to do it. I'm all ears, but as it stands, yeah, this is a preliminary thing. I can see this is what we're going to be basically working around no matter what. And so for those reasons, I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing no one else wishing to speak, the motion is to approve the resolution for the preliminary subdivision plat review as presented. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
By majority, that is approved. Item number nine is a request from the city of Stevens Point to grant an electric underground easement to the Wisconsin Public Service Corporation for the property located at 601 Mason Street with the parcel identified in your packet.
I will move with approval.
Moved by Keimer.
I can second that.
Seconded by Shuda. Discussion there? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. I'm going to cut some time off of our agenda. Items number 10 and 12 are the same. They were on different agendas, worded slightly differently, but they are both a resolution from the city, a request from the city of Stevens Point to enter into this resolution aspiring to eliminate roadway deaths and serious injuries as part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Award. So they are the same thing. 10 and 12 will be handled under one item and that is right now.
So moved.
Motion to approve, seconded by Steinmetz. Discussion.
With enthusiasm. Great.
Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is revision and renewal with the MacDill Lake District, MacDill Inland Lake Protection and Rehabilitation District regarding weed harvesting operations and Mr. Boozy, that's your district.
That is. Yes. Make them call out.
Want to motion one way or the other?
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm sorry, it's Burr, second.
Everyone's looking at you.
Well, generally speaking, if something is specific to a person's district, we, we look to them first. But city attorney beverage, you have some comments?
I just want to mention, I actually made a very small update to the agreement today. There's a section, if you look in there, is a section regarding insurance that specifies a $1.5 million coverage amount. I changed that to state a coverage amount at least equal to what is indicated on the attached Exhibit A, to which I attached the certificate of insurance that the Lake District provided us. That is a $1 million policy with a $3 million aggregate limit and essentially by, you know, giving it some, some additional thought after some discussions with Krista with the Lake District, I feel that that's probably sufficient. That is for liability in case anybody were to get injured. So even though you don't have the text of that in front of you, basically what I just said is the exact change that was made. So the idea being, here is the current insurance certificate and in the future, coverage shall be at least equivalent to what's indicated on that. And I would ask that, if it sounded like there was already a motion, if there could be an amendment to indicate approval for the agreement with the changes I just referenced.
Do we need a motion or second to the amendment?
Actually, we, we're a little flexible, so if you wanted to amend your motion, that would be appropriate.
Can I ask a question first?
Absolutely.
And is that in like renewing perpetuity or is that, how does that apply year after year?
So the agreement does allow for it to be essentially terminated on 30 days' notice during any of the off-season, like non-harvesting time by either party during any off-season. So this agreement is basically going to stay in place as is unless and until somebody, you know, decides to start a conversation about changing it during the off-season.
Okay. I would move to amend to the updated contract.
So, so to be clear, your motion is to approve the contract as amended?
Correct.
Set? Good with the second?
Is it me? Yep.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, this is good to see. We've been working on this for the better part of three years and I say we, meaning the city and the Lake District, so. Any additional comments or questions from the council? Comments from the audience?
Hello, Krista Olson, 33 17th Street, President of MacDill Lake District. I apologize, Andrew left us off of an email and I did not receive notice that there was another amended contract on the 8th and that there was an actual presentation of that contract on May 13th. That's why I was not there to represent the Lake District at that time about the contract. To bring the council up to speed, as I know a lot of you are not very familiar with us, we are 169 homes that form a municipality called MacDill Lake District for short. We assess a tax yearly to our Lake District of $400 and that is what is required to keep our maintenance of MacDill up. That cost is $42,200 or $45,250, which goes towards harvesting and supporting harvesting operations and then $24,000 for a chemical treatment. So if you do the math, you can see we're already over our budget. Throughout the years, MacDill Lake District has relied on and we thank the city of Stevens Point for your support for what you have done for us. The one thing I would just like to note in the contract is that, a new thing that is being brought forward in the contract is in Section 6B is a cost share of the maintenance of the equipment. Over the years, the city has been very gracious to us and looked, overlooked that cost share, which has saved the Lake District about between, from what I understand from the Maintenance Department, about $10,000 to $13,000 that we have not had to pay for the maintenance on the equipment. If you do the math again, that's one-fourth of our budget. So what we're going to be facing now with the increase of the cost of the insurance that we had to bring up, to bring our insurance certificate up, and with this cost that we will now have to incur for the maintenance of the equipment, we're going to be increasing our budget by 25% next year to our homeowners or passing on basically an $80 increase in their tax and Lake District fees. To some of my residents who are living on a fixed income, this is just another kink and another pain for them. And so what I'd like to just ask for the common council to think tonight on is maybe could we look at that section of the agreement and maybe put a cap on that or could we continue as we have been in the past? I know $13,000 for a city budget is not much, but to us, that's one-fourth of our budget and that cuts me somewhere where I can't then maintain MacDill. And I have to tell my residents that you can't afford to stay in your home and I don't like to do that. We had last year Mindy come to our Lake District meeting and tell her that, tell us that she couldn't afford her home anymore due to the fees coming up and the taxes increasing. And so I'm asking tonight, please, let me keep those people in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion before you is to approve the contract as amended. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
I don't know. Abstain, I guess. I don't know.
Honestly, sir, you, you need a reason to abstain.
I don't know enough about it. I don't, I don't know, I'd like to ask more questions, I guess, but I'm not going to be able to get them, so. Less knowledge. It's going to pass, though. I'll say no.
Niebon.
No.
Steinmetz.
And we can't ask any questions right now, we just kind of.
We could have.
Okay.
We had, we had the comment period and.
Her statements raised some questions for me.
Okay.
For the council comment period.
I'm going to go to our parliamentarian, we're halfway through the vote.
You could bring it back.
I mean, the, the alternative is they operate without a contract and that can be even more devastating to the Lake District.
I think we can proceed with further discussion if there is no objection from any member of the board.
Fair enough. Do the existing votes stand?
I think the existing votes would need to stand.
Okay. Questions?
When's the last time that $400 fee has been updated? Or increased?
We yearly vote on, at our annual meeting in October, the Lake District fee increase. This year, we took an increase from $380 and proposed to go to $425 because we had had it held for the last four years, but we've been increasing that fee regularly because of the increase in expenses that are coming from DNR, insurances and just cost of fuel and cost of business. On top of it too, we also assess our homes, they took on with a dredging project, a $5,000 cost assessment, which is then for some homeowners, another $400 that they're paying per year. So every year we're voting, just like you vote like a budget for the city, and we're increasing that fee every year because of the costs going up. Or we're having to cut things and just cut services and like tonight, my husband's just trying to figure out how to put together some netting and some equipment for us because we don't have the money to pay for the equipment. Thank you.
Alder Keimer.
Just to clarify, I mean, the way I read the contract in 6B is that for maintenance and repairs, everything, anything that's $1,500 or less, the district will pay for and anything $1,500 above, the city will pay for. So I'm not sure where that $13,000 is coming from.
From what I understand, now this would be per incident of repair. So over the summer, we have several different repairs that go on, on the equipment as cutter bars break, oil line lets loose. We sometimes have lost, especially with our older harvester, the equipment costs keep on just increasing as parts wear out. So that's where the average cost comes in of about $10,000 to $13,000 per year. And so as this contract reads, every incident is going to be on us and since the equipment is usually a couple hundred dollars here for a hose, $200 for a cutter bar, it's pretty much going to just keep on landing in our lap.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alder Christensen.
With the newer equipment, I would assume there'd probably be fewer repairs as, as opposed to the same amount or more. And so there's also a good possibility that you may actually see a decrease and not an increase.
For one, yes, that would be true. Unfortunately, our conveyor, from what we understand from Aquarius Systems, is in need of a revamp. And then the other equipment is our one that you make sure you say a prayer before you start it up and make sure you have the additional parts for changing out, just in case they blow one year on the water. And we keep a tow rope on hand because usually, and a couple residents keep on helping with towing for the summer. But it is a, we do appreciate very much the new harvester. It's a wonderful machine. I was working on it this weekend with putting some equipment on for our required GPS systems for the DNR, but unfortunately, the other one is old and it is definitely showing its wear.
But before you were dealing with two old ones, now what used to be the newer one is now the older one and the other one's new.
Yes, but that, it's still.
Right.
Yeah.
Alder Shuda, you had questions?
Yeah.
Your vote still stands, but please ask your questions.
Thank you. Thank you much, mayor. So the city was covering that $13,000 in the past and that money came from someplace, Corey? I'm addressing our comptroller.
It comes from the fleet budget. So we've got a budget for maintaining city vehicles and equipment and that's the, the budget area that it would come from.
And was that budgeted for this year?
So.
Were you planning on that $13,000 this year to be?
Well, the fleet budget is.
Yeah, it's a bucket, but I mean, there's plans, there's thought processes.
Sure. So it, it's a pretty small piece of the overall bucket, so we didn't necessarily take that into consideration specifically when planning this budget for 2024. So just because we're, we're looking more at overall fleet and the other issue that we have is, so typically the Public Works Department, they'd be the ones who propose the fleet budget and we tell them, you know, no increases. So if you have to increase on one line item, decrease somewhere else.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I'd like to understand the incident because during the, during the plan, or during the commission, we were talking about like incidents being grouped together as far as the, the cost that goes into, say, the increase from 500 to 1,500. How do we define a, an incident or a scenario where we're, we're paying for one thing versus paying for another thing? And what's like, is it timeframe or is it like parts or I guess, how are we defining what an incident is?
Like, could we have multiple incidents in one day?
Correct.
If it's different parts.
But like, in that scenario.
But if you blow a tire on your car and the tire smashes the fender, that, that's considered one incident even though they're two separate parts, but.
Right.
We'll let the city attorney speak to his understanding.
How would you like it to be?
I mean, an incident to me, and being someone who's not mechanical, would be a scenario in that you're blowing, but again, if it's, if it's a cutting blade goes out versus, you know, the GPS, I'm not, I'm just making things up, but if, if things aren't like, but they're happening in a short succession of time, is that defined as an incident or is it, does something have to be like in that scenario?
Depends if they're related. I was going to say, yeah, if they're related. If the, the blade broke and cut the wire to the GPS, that would be an incident. But if the blade broke and the GPS fell in the water because I bumped it.
But if a blade breaks and, you know, you're, you're operating with, with an incident and, and needs to likewise incidents, that's, I guess, that's where I'm kind of, is there a definition, there probably isn't a definition defined, but what do we envision that scenario being?
So we could pull the language from your, like, your typical auto insurance contract and cram that type of stuff into here and make it oh-so-technical. Oh, my goodness, we could, we could really get down in the weeds.
Hey! Boom.
Wow.
So.
And, and, you know, that, that is an option.
I don't know if that's an option that either this body, the district, or me really desires. We do have a, a factor here that's present though, which is, there's been a 20-year course of conduct here for this exact type of operation, exact equipment, in the same two parties. And I'm not familiar in my 11-year tenure of there being a dispute about one incident to multiple incidents, occurrences. If you go and read the case law and insurance contracts, it's occurrences is the word that you see. So I guess in theory, the remaining votes here.
We do have a factor here that's present, though, which is, there's been a 20-year course of conduct here for this exact type of operation, exact equipment, in the same two parties. And I'm not familiar, in my 11-year tenure, of there being a dispute about one incident, multiple incidents, occurrences. If you go and read the case law on insurance contracts, it's occurrences is the word that you see. So I guess, in theory, the remaining votes here could vote no, and this could stay as a ongoing discussion, and we could bring something back in the next month or sometime in the future. However, my understanding from conversations with Krista, going all the way back into, like, December or January, is that they wanted to have this contract done in, like, February to get going on things. So, you know, can, can you hear that sound, that little murmur in the background? That's the milfoil growing as we speak. It's quite noisy, it turns out. So it's, it's up to you. I'm comfortable with it as, as is. Is there the potential that we could get into some very minutia-type dispute over the triggering of that? Sure. So, your call.
Well, and I'm going to take the liberty here and just make a comment, because we have been working on this for the better part of three years, working with the Lake District, getting the language straight. This, this contract isn't something brand-new that we started. It's, it's existing. We're modifying it, updating it. The cost of bolts has gone up. The cost of fuel filters has gone up. My property taxes went up. Your property taxes went up. The cost of doing the same things we did 10, 15, 20 years ago have increased. And when we say, well, the government can pay for it, there is no government funding of anything. That's all taxpayer money. So in effect, we're all paying for this to begin with. The, the cost of things goes up, and that's why we've updated the contract. We've added and cleared up some language that may have, was a little gray over the years. Is it perfect? No, but it allows the operation to continue without getting into the weeds too much. It was so good. You know, so it was said earlier tonight, don't let perfect get in the way of doing good. Alder Marrow.
I would think, I would recommend to this council not to get too, too, like, legal in, because it seems, it seems, it seems like the Lake District and the city have a pretty good working relationship. And if we get the legal minutia flowing, I think that would be a thing we don't really want to start doing.
I would agree, and I actually, like I mentioned earlier, with, with the update in the equipment, I don't see that it's going to be overly problematic. If it is a year from now, I think we could, we could always, I think because of the working relationship we've had, we'd make the change. But I think, I think what we have in front of us is, is workable, and if it does need to be tweaked a year from now, we'll tweak it. But I think with the newer equipment, I think we're going to be in a good place.
Thank you. And as the city attorney pointed out, there's a 30-day clause in there, either party on the off-season.
And like you said, it's, it's never been contentious. We'll work together, and we'll make it work if it does end up being problematic.
Any last comments?
Call a question. One last... That already happened. What is, what is the alternative here? If we do not, if this thing, what is that, what happens in the breakdown of that relationship? If this doesn't, if we don't have one, what, what does that look like?
We will continue our relationship. The only thing I'm just looking at is that my budget passed in October, and I don't have $13,000 in it for equipment this year. I'm, not to blog and, you know, be, you know, but we have a Painted Rock fundraiser June 1st. Please come and join us, you know, $10 a person, lots of good prizes, and we're trying to rain some money to pay for our bills. But at the same time, too, those fundraisers just don't cover $13,000 in one year. My donation box was dumped from Village of Whiting when they took over the boat landing. I can't get donations in a donation box anymore. So, yeah, I'm begging here for spare change to run out for this year. Maybe we could do it in honorary this year, have it in the contract. We'll try to keep some fundraising going. We'll look, see how much the costs come in, and we'll see how we can do for budgeting next year, but maybe can make it one honorary incident this year so that we can stay on budget.
We honestly don't know what it's going to cost.
Right.
It's certainly within the council's purview that if it does, for some reason, exceed $13,000, we have the authority to revisit that. But we don't know if it's going to be less, more, somewhere in between. All right.
Last comments.
One more question?
Yeah, just last comments. I, I think, the way I read 6B, like, the spirit of it is that we're trying to provide some sort of cap to the district so that they are not in this huge hole. That said, if this equipment is occurring $1,000 of repairs every other week, that seems kind of problematic to me and concerning from your end and on the city's end. So, I mean, I, I think it does seem imperative that this project needs to get going, that we don't necessarily want to hold this contract up. But I would hope that if we have significant repairs, that this can come back to the city, and we can find some better way to share these costs. But I think, like Alder Christiansen said, I'm optimistic that a brand-new piece of machinery, if it's causing over $10,000 of repairs in one season...
I would expect that to be covered under warranty.
That seems very, yeah. So, I guess.
All right. Where did we leave off? Mr. Steinmetz.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And by majority, that is approved. Item number 14 is Project 24-12 to award the well number 12 drilling project to the, to municipal well and pump for an amount not to exceed $407,770. Alder Keemer moves to approve, seconded by Lang. Discussion. I feel like an auctioneer at some point. He didn't even say anything, he just gave me the nod. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.